The invocation will be provided by North Cleveland Church God Pastor Kevin McLamery. Pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Milan Blake, please stand.
Great. Very well followed. Thank you, Pastor. Family, all of you, and perfect. All you. Okay. Okay. Awesome. Right. One is our source. Oh. Five. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now have the roll call, please.
Alford.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Before we go to the mayor, I'd like to welcome the Chamber of Commerce Mike Griffin, the Director of School, Staff, and the School Board members that we have present, and the Director of the Library Foundation, Tricia Parks. Thank you very much. Now, we'll go to the mayor for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I've got a couple of amendments coming around that I'll explain here in just a moment, but before I do that, we did twenty-year pens a couple of weeks ago, and we missed one fine young lady who has twenty years of service with us, Bonnie Wilson, twenty years, all twenty years in the registry of deeds office. So Bonnie is here today to give, to get her certificate presented to her and her twenty-year pen. If the banner and maybe Adam would get a picture of her when she comes up to get it, I'd sure appreciate it. And we apologize, we had left her out with the original bunch a few weeks ago, but we do appreciate her twenty years of service. Bonnie?
Again, thank you, Bonnie, for your years of service. We're feverishly trying to get the ARP funds ready for a report, this end-of-the-year report to the feds. It's got some requirements that we don't have to do on the quarterly reports, such as the end-of-year commitments. What's the term they use now, Crystal? It's not commitments. In my mind, we've had all the money committed for a long time, but they're a little more picky about it. So Crystal has got, had to go back and do amendments to various contracts where you've changed the amounts on things, such as water projects and cityfills and things like that. She's about got all those in order, but there was some cleanup I needed to do as far as the budget versus the plan also. The two amendments that have come around are just that. The water fund, for example, the PO was killed on your Binker Road project, went back into the fund balance of ARP, and we're bringing it out, the proper amount out, to have that amount in the budget for cityfills. The second sheet is some more cleanup where we've moved money from septic, and I'll give you a septic tank report too here in just a moment, where we've moved money from the septic bucket to, and also from the canary bucket, to EMS. So if you could, I'm bypassing the finance committee to do this, but I can't wait till January. If we could get those approved today, I would sure appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, well, we kind of quote-unquote pre-approved the one for cityfills, but, Mr. Chairman, you have these two amendments here. We'll take them as a pack. If you don't mind, make a motion, we accept these, both of these amendments as presented. Put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Second, Commissioner Slater. No discussion? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that. Hopefully now we'll be ready to go with that end-of-the-year report that they're extra picky on because of that commitment issue. I'm now passing out an updated ARP plan. You just got one last month, but we've gone through and cleaned up several of the lines, putting exact amounts as we know them in various lines. There are still a few cleanups that'll have to occur, but it's pretty close to being accurate as we know today. One thing I wanted to point out, in the sewer bucket, at the end of the day, that program officially ends the end of this year, but this is the last voting meeting, and it's actually already been closed out because the two or three remaining have said they're not able to do it. So at the end of the day, the one that we did through the RC&amp;D, you funded eighty-four people's septic repairs for a total of seven hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars, and the amount that we did in-house was seventeen people for a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars. So if someone asks about septic repairs in the future, my line is, Bradley County doesn't do that, but we did do it with ARP money when we had it. We did it in the form of grants. So a hundred and one people took advantage of that grant offer and now have repaired septic system. The other thing in this ARP update, updated plan shows you, the second page, the amount that is left to be spent next year, right now looks like it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's the bottom of the second page in the interest bucket. The first page is the twenty-one million. It's all committed. It's all budgeted, committed, and everything is hopefully finalized. There will be a few dollar here, dollar there tweaks, but pretty much it's finished. But the second sheet is a growing box that will continue to grow with interest and also hopefully grow the amount at the bottom of that box for an amount that you all will be approving. Hopefully that stays like it is until budget time, and then it will be addressed in the budget cycle come spring. So also, in addition to the amendments you just did, I need you to approve putting this updated plan in your minutes so that we can refer to that as the official updated plan also.
Commissioner Winters made the motion. Second on Commissioner Goins, any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that. Hopefully now we'll be ready to go with that end-of-the-year report that they're extra picky on because of that commitment issue. I'm now passing out an updated ARP plan. You just got one last month, but we've gone through and cleaned up several of the lines, putting exact amounts as we know them in various lines. There are still a few cleanups that'll have to occur, but it's pretty close to being accurate as we know today. One thing I wanted to point out, in the sewer bucket, at the end of the day, that program officially ends the end of this year, but this is the last voting meeting, and it's actually already been closed out because the two or three remaining have said they're not able to do it. So at the end of the day, the one that we did through the RC&amp;D, you funded eighty-four people's septic repairs for a total of seven hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars, and the amount that we did in-house was seventeen people for a total of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars. So if someone asks about septic repairs in the future, my line is, Bradley County doesn't do that, but we did do it with ARP money when we had it. We did it in the form of grants. So a hundred and one people took advantage of that grant offer and now have repaired septic system. The other thing in this ARP update, updated plan shows you, the second page, the amount that is left to be spent next year, right now looks like it's a hundred and seventy-one thousand. That's the bottom of the second page in the interest bucket. The first page is the twenty-one million. It's all committed. It's all budgeted, committed, and everything is hopefully finalized. There will be a few dollar here, dollar there tweaks, but pretty much it's finished. But the second sheet is a growing box that will continue to grow with interest and also hopefully grow the amount at the bottom of that box for an amount that you all will be approving. Hopefully that stays like it is until budget time, and then it will be addressed in the budget cycle come spring. So also, in addition to the amendments you just did, I need you to approve putting this updated plan in your minutes so that we can refer to that as the official updated plan also.
Commissioner Winters made the motion. Second on Commissioner Goins, any discussion? No discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll now go to the reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today, but do want to wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year since we won't be meeting again until January sixth. So Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do, I also want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I want to say one thing about the downtown area, the city of Cleveland. It is looking more and more beautiful every time you go around. If you go to Johnson Park, it's just beautiful down there. That was the town that I grew up in when I was a kid. All this was my town. Everything around here was my town, Edith Spot and whatever. But, and furthermore of that, most all that work downtown here was done by grants. And other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got November TDOT litter grant totals, five hundred and twelve county road miles, one hundred and sixty-six state road miles, seventy-five city roads, for a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty pounds of litter for the month, and two hundred and seventy-five pounds of that was recycled materials. A big thank you to Thomas Bell that works with me, Camille McGill, Gabe Thomas, all these folks. If it wasn't for them, no way I could run this litter grant without them. Also, a big thank you to EMS, Bradley Medical. My brother fell a few days ago and could not get him up. He fell on his front porch, and I couldn't move him. I thought maybe his back or something, neck or something was broke. EMS, I mean, really fast, when I called them, got there in a hurry, and we were able to remove him. As y'all know, I don't miss very many meetings up here. We had a finance meeting Thursday. My brother's been in ICU, so just say a, say a prayer for, for him. He's, he's doing a little bit better. Hopefully sometime this week he'll be out of ICU. But our first responders and stuff all over this county and, and city, I've been with the sheriff's office for twenty-three years, and things that go unnoticed by our first responders are just, it's unbelievable what a good job they do. And I hope everybody has a good Christmas also. Let's definitely don't forget the reason, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, for being born. And let's also, I saw a former chairman out there, Johnny Moll, here today too. Good to see him as always, too. And that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The growth study coordinating ad hoc committee will meet here in the commission room tomorrow at ten AM. Also, the education committee will meet on Thursday, January the ninth, at noon in this room also. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins, please.
This district's doing well. Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. That's all I have.
Commissioner Gilbert?
Commissioners and mayor, I would like to just congratulate you on the placement of the opioid money. The juvenile drug court, in leadership of Josh Rutherford, graduated seven kids, perhaps a second chance at life. I mean, they, they go in there and they do all the schooling and teach them, and man, these kids have one more chance before they turn eighteen, and all of their record is wiped clean. And man, most of them was excited to start their lives over again, and they just do a fine job. Bradley County, or Bradley Central High School, Patrick Spangler, thank you so much for the road show. I got to go in there and go back into the halls, and man, it was like going back in time again through H Hall and A Hall and the cosmetology. I stayed in cosmetology, but boy, it was so nice to be able to, and the music they had for us was great. And O'Koy Middle School, they are Unified Champion School now. I didn't really know what that meant, but when I went there, it was for kids, it was special need kids. And they had, looked like twenty-five, thirty kids in there, and they was taking care of them. It was a great thing. So evidently, that unified part is pretty much a, a big deal if you're that kind of school. And I'd like to congratulate them on that. And Merry Christmas, everybody. And just like Tommy said, Jesus is the reason for the season. And love one another, and see you next year.
Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pardon my voice. I've been running the roads the last few days. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations and welcome to my fraternity brother, Kevin McLamery. We welcome him to Cleveland, in Bradley County. He's a Bradley Central grad, grad of Lee College, Lee University, been an outstanding pastor in Alabama, but he came home, and we're glad to have him at North Cleveland. But thank you for being here. It was a great, great get. One of the reasons my voice is all gone, I've been in and out of the hospital, as some of our fellow commissioners have. And I want to tell you, we have soldiers that work in our EMS and in our hospital and set in the emergency room. All people in that field are underpaid, but these people are above and beyond the pale. They work twelve-hour shifts, and the lady that worked with my wife when we were in emergency, had been there since two-thirty that morning, and had stayed to see what was going on there. As we walked through, a multitude of people still wanting to be seen, they were working in the midst of it. They had a coat blue, and about twelve of them ran out of our area, out into the foyer, out to the, out to the street, and helped a gurney get in with an individual that was totally comatose and didn't know he was in the world. We owe a gratitude to those folks. In the middle of these holidays, we're all celebrating, but some of us are following ambulances along the highway with our wires in the back of it. That's where I was not too long ago. And fortunately for our faith, it got us through that, but for the great people at our hospital that knew to do a CT scan and knew to do what medication needed to happen, we went home within twenty-four hours of going in the hospital. So thank you very much for those unsung heroes. The two people that got my wife into the ambulance looked like they were twelve years old to me. They were young as they could be, but they were, everybody seemed like they're young to me, by the way. The, the young man and young lady took such great care of my wife, but also told me that I could go get in the car and follow them, that they didn't need me, and they did great work. So thank you for what you do there. It's an honor to live in this town. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All's well in District Three.
Commissioner Blake, please.
Same as chairman. I also wanted to welcome former Commissioner from the Third District, my old colleague, Johnny Moll. Good to see you, sir. Also, thank you, Keisha, for the Christmas tree. Yeah, I don't know if it'll make it a year, but I'm not, yeah, I'm not.
You gotta water it.
Yeah, but thank you very much. I appreciate that, all you guys do over there at the library. And Christmas, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. It's about understanding what this moment's about, what this day's about. It's also about family, and I'd like to welcome my youngest, just came in from Sanford. All I got.
Thank you. Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Second district's doing well, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, same. I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Otherwise, I have nothing else to report.
Commissioner Beatty?
I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and ambulance service had to come get my eight about thirty days ago, and they did a real good job when they came. A Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. There being no unfinished business, we'll go on down to the approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion. Mason and Goins, open for discussion. Be no discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Agenda item A is, I guess, I'm the one. Several weeks ago, we learned that Dr. Jeff Lovinggood resigned from the Seventh District Board of Education seat. We, the county commission, passed a timeline to fill the seat, and today is the day. We have received three resumes from individuals desirous of consideration, and I will open the floor for them to take a minute or two to introduce themselves to us. Also, if there is anyone else here today that wishes to be considered, please step to the podium. For those people that, the three that applied, you're welcome to speak and introduce yourself. There's no sequence here, just.
I will humbly submit my name and appreciate you guys' thoughts and consideration.
Anyone have any questions for the gentleman? Yes, please.
So why do you want to serve on the school board?
My biggest reason to serve on the school board is simply to be a voice for the people in the district, not always knowing who's going to be able to do that. I admire Dr. Lovinggood. I knew him before he was at Cleveland, even though he grew up here, because we served in churches close to each other up in the Nashville area. And it's just an opportunity. I love the relationships I have, being the chaplain at Bradley Central for the last fifteen years and serving on many boards, whether it be FCA or Isaiah 117. Any opportunity to help support kids and to fight for kids, to give them every opportunity to move forward, is something I'm always willing to say yes to.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Smith or Ms. Hathcock?
I consider it an honor to be here today. I, when I heard that this position was coming open, it, something jumped inside of me, pretty much because not only did we have a child in special ed, but also we had, two of our daughters were in general ed. So we've seen the whole gamut. But the thing that made me want to serve on the school board was about fifteen years ago, Trip was in class, and his classroom was fifty-two degrees. I contacted the city school, well, I contacted the high school, then I contacted the city school board because nothing was done. And one school board member called me back and said, "You have no right to contact a school board member." I'm like, "If nothing is done, yes, I do." And at that point, I got Lindsay on the phone, of course, and said, "You know what? If a school board position ever comes open, I want to be on it, because I want to be the one that people can reach out to and feel like they have significance." So when this came open, it just, my heart said, "Okay, Peggy, this is it." And I see the need that is coming up. I work for the city. I have for almost thirty-five years. And thank you, Mr. Ledford, when you mentioned our, our park. That was from my, took place in my department, so I feel very proud of the advances that the city's making. But, all right, now my, my train just left. But I see how the schools are going to have to improve. I checked this morning. The city of Cleveland has had four hundred and fifty-three residential, single-family building permits issued this year. The school is going to have a lot to do in order to keep up. I want to be part of that, and I appreciate your consideration.
Anyone have any question? Thank you very much. Mr. Smith, please.
Good evening. It's a pleasure being with the commission this afternoon. My name's Alan Smith. I think I recognize some of you all. I am the citizen representative on the audit committee, so I have a chance to work with you all once a year and go through the audit process. But just a little bit of background, both my wife and I are from Bradley County, second and third generations on both sides. We're products of public education. We had three children, went to Cleveland and Bradley. We're kind of a split family. Three of us went to Cleveland, two of us went to Bradley, but I got a, which made it interesting on Friday night, when a son's playing for Cleveland, the daughter's dating a quarterback for Bradley, it kind of made it for an interesting Friday evening. But we had a great experience through the public school education process, and couldn't have been more pleased with both systems. From my perspective right now, it appears that the Bradley County School System enjoys great leadership from the board, director. I know several principals, student, I mean, teachers along the way. They enjoy great leadership at this point. But Ms. Slater, to your question about why do I want to get involved at this point, I think that most important responsibility that a society has to its people is to educate. Not only educate people, it starts with the youth, but at the end of the day, educate everyone, and I think that's very, very important. I know that you have my resume. You know that I teach part-time at Lee University and have done that for fourteen or fifteen years. It is a finance class, but I take it with the perspective of how can I help these students make better decisions, think more critically? At the end of the day, life's outcomes are better when people think more critically and make better decisions. You have my resume. I'd be happy to answer any other questions or comments you have at this point.
Anyone have any questions? No one? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak or make themselves available for consideration? There being none, I now open it up for nomination. Commissioner Winters?
As Seventh District Commissioner for fourteen years, it's been our goal every time that we have a turnover, and we've had several, several that sat beside me as commissioners became leaders in the State, State House. But when we had Jeff Lovinggood come, we thought we would have him for a long time. We thought we would have a lot of stability and are very surprised that we are back to this particular decision today. We thought we would have a lot of stability, uh, and are very surprised that we are back to this particular decision today. It's a tough decision. Each of us have signed up for this decision, uh, but it's a tough one. We have three of the most kind, generous, uh, community figures that have done tremendous work in this town. And what they have said is sharing their hearts, and, uh, it's our job, uh, with the three candidates we have known for years, that are very special people in this community, to make a very tough decision for us. And basically boils down to who can do the best at this point in time for Bradley County Schools. Bradley County Schools are in the midst of a five-year plan to do three schools. Finances are very critical to us, and how, uh, the county can utilize its funds as matches our funds. So we must have someone that is strong financially, uh, that can give advice when advice needs to be done and also to move forward. Therefore, uh, I'd like to nominate the last speaker for our presentation, Alan Smith. Alan brings a lot of this to the table with his preparation. If you look at his resume that he has here, and he's worked with our audit, he's worked with advising, uh, banks all over the country as a Vanderbilt Education and Business Administration, as a Bachelor of Science from the London School of Economics, uh, and, uh, Regional Financial Corporations, what he does. And for that reason and for this reason, uh, I nominate, uh, Alan Smith for this Seventh District School Board seat.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a nomination? Being no other nominations, call the roll, please.
Alford?
Yeah, please. Commissioner Gilbert?
This election will be up, this, this election will be on in...
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
Yeah.
So the other people that are here, you have a opportunity to run in eighteen months. Uh, Mr. Winters and Josh Rogers are, uh, commissioners in their district, and I believe they know their people, and I'm going to be voting the way that they vote. But just know that this election's coming up, and we need good people to run, so...
We do.
Always know that you can still come up and run. Thank you.
Any other comments? Take the vote, please.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
That's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Like to ask Mr. Smith, would you like, and I, the mayor today can, um, swear in this person, or swear on Mr. Smith if he'd like to be sworn in today.
If that's all right with you, mayor, and, and Mr. Smith, let's get this on the roll.
Or he can do it with his family later, but to be able to give him the option, whatever he'd like.
Yeah, we've got the oath. If you want to, we can go ahead, just come up front, and we'll, we'll do it right quick if you want to.
Thank you. Commissioner Rogers for bringing that up.
And again, thank you for your confidence.
We'll now move on to Agenda Item B, and opioid abatement. Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Finance Committee met the other day and, uh, put together a formal recommendation of how the opioid funding should be allocated out. If you look on page forty-three, as it's on your PDF there, uh, keep in mind, real quick review of how this all works. We have, obviously, the opioid money comes in throughout the year. It's, uh, basically, um, summed up. And then during the budget process, for those that are recurring costs through the budget process, we go through a hearing, and it's part of our resolution. Then there's the part that's left over to, and we had two hundred thousand this year, uh, to grant out. And then we grant those out to, uh, those organizations that help with, uh, recovery and, and, um, education, all those kind of things. So we had two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we'll tell you that the request was more, so we obviously had to, uh, make some adjustments there. I'd like to go over real quick, uh, the, uh, allocation there. ATS The Bridge is going to be awarded sixty thousand. Boys and Girls Club, thirty-one thousand. Bradley Prevention Coalition, and they are new to us this year, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Foundation House Ministries, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the Caring Place, fifty-one thousand, five hundred. This is a formal recommendation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Chairman, I put this in a form of motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Alford, please. Oh, second, okay. Open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert? Thompson?
Yes. Goins?
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Agenda Item C, Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item C is resolution to the one hundred and fourteenth session of the General Assembly. As we talked about last week, um, our Register D collects a fee with those titles. All of that money goes up to the, uh, Treasury up in Nashville, and none of it comes back. Uh, makes sense to, uh, in this resolution, it's going to be requesting that half of it come back for the sole purpose of education capital projects, which we talked about last week and was alluded to a few moments ago. Over the next, what, thirty-six months, four years, we're going to be knee-deep into capital projects with respects to the, uh, school board's request for, uh, new schools. So it makes sense, and hopefully the General Assembly, uh, will take this up. We met with the representatives last week as well and, uh, brought this to their attention. They're aware of it because we did last year, but hopefully this gets traction up in Nashville, uh, this session, and it passes. Um, it's worth about one point one to one point four million estimate per year, uh, to our county, uh, with, uh, capital projects. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I put this resolution, I was here, allocate, uh, of the real estate transfer tax to the county where the tax was collected and on a recurring basis. It's on page forty-four and page forty-five. Mr. Chairman, put that in form of motion. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Slater on the second. Open for discussion. Being no discussion, call the roll, please.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll now move to communication from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes to anyone that wish to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Ms. Cash, please. Let's go ahead, Ms. York.
Hi, um, my name is Keisha Parks. I'm from the Cleveland Bradley County Public Library. And, um, I just wanted to let all of you know that we, um, appreciate you for all that you, all the support that you offer us and, um, for your generosity, um, throughout the year. And I hope that you have a wonderful Christmas and a pretty amazing New Year's as well. That is all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Commissioner Ca-, uh, yes, Dr. Cash.
First, of course, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, but I really just wanted to say thank you to the commission, um, for the appointment of the new Bradley County School Board's member, of Mr. Alan Smith. We greatly appreciate that and look forward to his service. But also a thank you to Mickey Clark and to Peggy Hathcock for being willing to put their names forward. It's always a, a tough thing to put yourself out there, not knowing what the results would be, but just wanted to say an appreciation to, uh, all three of them, but to you, because it's also a hard decision for you to make as well, and, uh, we just want to appreciate it. Also want to thank Josh Taylor for being here today, um, and suggest that Alan maybe say hello to him before he leaves today, since they'll be working together, but, uh, just very, very proud and ready to do the work with, uh, with Mr. Smith. It will be a great opportunity. Also, just another on your radar, as I was driving to, um, uh, you know, to Valley View this morning, on the right-hand side, there's a, a patch of land, Tim, that's being, uh, cleared. Made me a little nervous, and I'm finding out that there's a new housing development going in over there to about another hundred homes. So, um, just, you know, letting all of us know to keep an eye out. And if you see those popping up, if you would just let me know, I would greatly appreciate it. My heart, uh, kind of started racing a little bit, thinking, "Well, that wasn't on my plan." So I appreciate y'all so much. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, please, sir. There you go.
Um, I just want to make a public, uh, thank you to Commissioner Blake for allow, or for bringing about more transparency in regard to the state bill that's going through for, um, the scout, the voucher, school voucher system. And I am just always appreciative when the commissioners go in that direction, where they allow us to know about these things. Thank you again, Commissioner Blake, and have a Merry Christmas.
Yes, please.
Josh Taylor with Bradley County Board of Education. And again, I'd just like to reiterate what's already been said here today, but thank you to all of you guys, uh, for a very difficult vote. Thank you to everyone else, uh, that, uh, did put their name in this. Again, it's, uh, wonderful applicants there. I know it was a difficult decision, but I appreciate you guys very much. And, uh, Mr. Smith would forward the work with you. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there's no one else, I just want to mention a couple of things on that resolution you just passed. Please, you can, uh, encourage your legislators to support that. It averages one point seven million a year that would come to us if that were to pass the legislature. It's not going to be easy. We put it out last year. It didn't move too far, but the talk is better this year. But that's about a nickel on your tax rate. Dr. Cash and this commission were working together on Phase One, pay cash. But Phase Two will probably be a, a tax increase unless there's additional money to go into that service. This, this will go a long way towards some, some debt whenever it comes time to do Phase Two and Phase Three. So it's important that we get this passed. It's a growing area of state revenue that they will never miss if they could just agree to send half of it back to the counties. And the county mayors across the state have endorsed it, uh, wholeheartedly. So hopefully, we'll, we'll get some traction on this, because it's going to be needed in the next two or three or four years, I assure you. Thank you. And also, I didn't mention earlier, like everyone else, but from the office of county mayor and from my family to yours, we wish everyone, of course, a very Merry Christmas. Won't see you in this forum until next year, so also a Happy New Year. Have a happy, safe New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Voting session will be Monday, January the sixth at seven PM here at the County Courthouse. Upcoming events, there was the Policy Coordinating Ad hoc Committee tomorrow at ten AM here. County offices are closed December twenty-third through the twenty-fifth in observance of Christmas holiday. County offices closed December the thirty-first, January the first in observance of New Year holiday.